I'm assuming she's.
Hello?
Hello.
Hey.
Thank you, thank you for being able to come tonight because we needed, we definitely need you for quorum, so thank you.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you, Matthew.
Shannon, could you?
Yes.
Later, our channel, we just need to say that.
Yeah.
Location.
Yeah, so I'm gonna call the meeting to order at 7:06 PM. Um, well, we'll do the roll and then Ms. Strassner, you could explain that you're here via Zoom.
Okay.
Uh, well, anyone? Lisa, copy, Molly.
Here.
Matthew Johnson.
Here.
Dan Driscoll.
I lean for Dan.
And then Shannon Strassner.
Here.
Could you give your location and reason?
Yes, I am at my home at 605 Page Street in Scottsville and I am not feeling so great. And I also did not have childcare coverage, so.
Totally understandable, but we're glad that we have this option to participate remotely.
Thank you.
A lifesaver.
It has been.
Okay, so we have a quorum. Um, let's proceed. Do we agree to the agenda?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to pass the agenda as is.
I will second that motion.
Okay, very good, motion passes. Um, minutes from May 1st, thank you Javier for having this for us. I know, I'm sure you have a lot on your plate right now. Give me just one moment, please, I wanna just check for one point. Okay, question about the minutes for old business public hearing regarding 190 Poplar Spring Road. To me, it was important to have it clarified that the tourist lodgings, the three structures are only to be used for tourist lodging and not for residential. Do we feel that that's necessary to elaborate on in the minutes? Or is that very clear in our zoning ordinance?
It's, it would be in the SUV or in the recommendation, but we could amend the minutes as discussed. And I would be willing to include that, I think of talking in the future, probably appreciate that.
I think it would be, I think it's a good idea, thank you, please do that. Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to pass the meeting minutes as is.
As discussed.
As discussed, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay, cool, just as long as you're on board with that.
Yes, yeah.
I will second that motion.
Okay, very good, motion passes, thank you. Report from town council.
Okay, I had to review some items with Javier, so thank you Javier for your help on that. At the last meeting, there was some discussion about reviewing committee assignments and some changes there. There seems to be some appetite for that, but it didn't get a lot of traction, so it may come up again. Um, there was brief out on the various committees. There was some interest in the website and on the strategic plan. I don't know if you all have any specific questions. We met last Thursday on the strategic plan, we're meeting this Thursday on the strategic plan. That should close it out, I think I have enough information at that point, hopefully to finish it and might work more closely with Matthew and Molly to get some additional information on that.
Okay, awesome.
Um, we voted on a budget of $755,200. And that passed, along with that, there was a meals tax increase from 4.5% to 6.5%. Some people feel that it was quiet about that, other people have heard rumblings in the business community, so I'm not sure exactly where that will, will land in terms of sentiment. We voted on a new interim town administrator, you both just met Rebecca Carter. She's here with us and is transitioning in, thank you Rebecca, Becky, right, goodbye Becky.
Oh, can, sorry, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Um, did you say she, I thought you said she was an interim?
Yes.
So she's not staying, she's just, just passing through?
Well, she's here filling the gap, they decided to reopen the job posting.
Okay.
If they could get a few additional candidates, that closes, I think, this week or next week, I talked to, Meredith Hines is leading that committee.
Okay.
To do the second round of hiring and depending on how much interest they get will depend on how the process goes forward.
Okay, thank you.
Uh huh, sure. Um, and then this month's agenda, we'll have the public hearing for 190 Poplar Spring. So that's sort of a follow-up to the work you all have done.
Okay, we would love to participate in some conversations about the website. How could we, how best should we make that happen?
Well, let's, let's, let me give you a breakdown of sort of where we are. So we've contracted a third-party company Civic Plus to do the bulk of the work on the website. So we approved the first round of look and feel and that happened when Matt was still here. So Matt, Javier and I met, they had the color palettes and all of the things that had already been in existence. I do have a link for a mockup, if you'd like to see that, I can send that out to you all.
Is it filled out with the different pages?
It is not filled out with the different pages, it's just the look and feel.
Okay.
Right now, the company is going through the process of doing content migration. So we are not doing content migration, they are. Once the content migration happens, that's targeted for the end of this month, then we will get a briefing on that and we will get to move things around. Now, it's our intention that we will assign different content moderators to different sections. So I'm assuming that you all will have control over your own content in a sort of subsection of the website, at least that's, if that's amenable to you all, but that's sort of what the thinking has been to date. And then everybody can put their documents and whatnot and have control over the, their portion of the site.
And this is the public portion, right?
Yes, there have been, there has been talk about having a separate intranet section for just internal people to share documents before they're made public, but I haven't spoken to the company about how that exactly will work.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Okay, so we'll know more probably by the end of the month, but I'm happy to share you the link to the mockup if you wanna see the new look and feel. It's, it's actually very nice, much more intuitive, I would say.
That would be great, I would love that.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think we, the concerns that we have are probably similar to what feedback you've already gotten, which is that it's very hard to navigate. Um, it's hard to even figure out when meetings are, the calendar, um, you know, downloading minutes, past agendas, downloading documents that are relevant that the public may wanna see and that we work with on a regular basis, so um, it sounds like all of that is gonna be a whole lot easier.
Yeah, and you know what, it strikes me, given your comments, that what I'll do is I will send you the list of sort of shortfalls of the existing site that government services came up with when they reviewed it and it included the things you talked about, as well as searching is difficult, there's no search function. This is the same company that's redoing our ordinances. So we hope that when they're done doing the ordinances, those ordinance will be available online and they will be searchable as well as the rest of the content.
Nice.
So that was supposed to be done fairly quickly and I don't have, I'm not the contact point on that, so I don't have an update on that. Javier, do you know anything about the ordinance?
For the fall.
Oh, it's for the fall now?
Replication. And what I understand once we have replications, pretty quickly putting it on Civic Plus.
Right.
They're all in the house. Um, you're using both companies for the website and for the.
Right.
So what exactly are they doing with the code?
They're going through and their legal teams are actually looking at the codes and making sure they're taking off all outdated codes, they're syncing up the, the stuff that's there to make sure there's no duplicates, that make sure that everything is legal in the current environment, that there's no question about them, that they're all done correctly and then they'll all be reposted.
And does that have to, those changes have to get voted on by town council, I presume, right?
It's clerical.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think there's any real, like substantive changes to the code itself.
Um, so for example, it's a lot of pointing back to actually where code is, what in the Virginia code is correct, so.
Oh, so it's pointing to Virginia code.
Historical, you know, trade of codes and things like that. So there shouldn't be any substantive changes.
No.
Okay.
But it'll be online, it'll be searchable, so that the general public can access it, as well as, you know, any of us.
It means that order.
Right, a logical.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Yeah, I mean, our current code is searchable, but you have to download the PDF and it's quite a large document.
Yeah.
And for those who don't know how to use Ctrl F and.
And is it both the town code and the zoning code or just the town?
The town code.
It's just the town.
Getting re-put by, but the zoning code will be up as PDS, but searchable through their document. So it's a good way of still trying to find yourself in the planning code. Um, and then you can kind of hop into the PDF, search that way.
Yeah, their search function will do both the HTML content and the PDF content, so.
Okay.
Which we cover.
Any questions for the zoning code?
Uh huh. But the, the commentary that's come by, very few people have really seen it, but the commentary of the few who have is that it looks a lot better, so, and it, it looks more, it, it's better laid out.
Cool, well, this is.
So I'll send you that, I'll send you all that link and the list of points that needed to be addressed in the website.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, matters from the public.
And there's no one on.
Okay. All right, moving on, old business, do we have, we don't have Vida online, right? Cause we're going to.
Talk about this now.
Okay, all right, so zoning text amendment, home stays?
Yes, I think the, what I've found that one of the issues you all had is how it's inspected for fire safety. Because there's not fire marshals that are building inspector either in, in here. I've talked with Maxie, with Berkeley group, and looking at putting that it's done by state fire marshal, our certified fire safety inspector. And then we have to provide it for to the town before they have an issue when it commits to do that. And she hasn't gotten back to me with the language to put in the ordinance for that. And of course, our attorney will look over that, sure.
So what we talked about is the, the ordinance proposal. Well, the history, let me backtrack a little bit, cause this is history that you might wanna hear also.
That would be great.
Um, the reason why home stays are on the agenda right now is because we had many, many, many conversations about Airbnb or short-term lodging, short-term rentals and what we wanted for the town. And we still have to continue the conversation with town council, it's a big conversation, what, you know, we envision for our town, what's appropriate, how many is too many? Um, so we, someone had the idea to look at home stays, it might have been Maxie, um, because home stays were kind of a little easier, kind of low-hanging fruit, and maybe we could all agree to that. And, and I think we can all agree to that. But then the question came up of inspections and whether these units should be inspected. We don't have any other units being inspected in our code. We don't have short-term lodging and we don't have rentals. So it came up in the home stay code and I said, wait a second, I don't know if we want to have home stays inspected when we're not having anything else inspected, so I don't think we should, especially because, I mean, it's a home that's occupied 365 days a year probably, so you would think that it would be up to code, but also, yeah, so I don't, I don't know if, I think, I think our question should be, do we want to put this level of restrictions on home stays when we don't have it on the others, do we wanna have it on the others? And kind of, I mean, I don't know what the rest of the counties are doing, I don't remember if we talked about what the city and the county do. Do they have their own people inspect?
Yes, but no, it's primarily your health department and inspection and building inspection, but would say that if you're gonna put that restriction on one, you would need to do all. But then again, like I said, the people are living in the homes. And if they're, they have insurance on their home.
Well, and oftentimes Airbnb has extra insurance that comes with the stay if they're going through that site. Um, I'm kind of not in favor of more restrictions and more inspections and more red tape, especially on something temporary.
Has someone actually made an application for home stay?
Nope, we've never seen a single one.
It's gonna be a hidden game.
Well, we figured it was some low-hanging fruit and if we can get agreement on that and, and make that easy for people to do, then that's a revenue stream that we're not taking advantage of right now and maybe we could, um, you know, simplifying it for people who might be interested in that.
I'm of a similar mind that I, I wouldn't wanna add more red tape. If we haven't found it necessary for the other dwellings, I don't think it would be appropriate to apply it to these.
And I think our, um, the goal was, we were trying to find out if we have to have that restriction, but since we're our own town, we get to decide if we want that, that's up to us, right? Okay. Cause the short-term lodging and, and rentals are regulated by our town, so we can decide if we wanna have building inspectors go in and, and it would have to be state building inspectors?
It wouldn't be, it would have to be like a certified fire safety inspector, a state home inspector. And I'm not sure that state fire marshal do that unless a county home for the inspection. But if, say it's a big home that's being used for that, that fire safety, um, inspection would be quite expensive and.
And they'd want to inspect the whole entire house, not just the one bedroom that might be used in the home stay? Well, I, I'm, I'm in favor of striking that provision out of the home stay amendment that we came up with.
Just out of curiosity, do we know how other counties and, and locales handle that? Do they, do they require fire inspections?
In Buckingham, wait, what, I mean, we don't have any restrictions on someone renting out a room.
Are you getting tax revenue from it there? Do you want to?
And we don't have the. I'm having all two years, probably two years current of new leaving and so they're getting them off bed and breakfast and.
Mm-hmm.
And the one motel here. So that if, if someone rents a room, home owner would pay them. How would you know that they would do on that if you don't express something?
Well, the idea is if it's by right, if we can make it by right and make it easier, then people would be more likely to, you know, admit that they're doing it and, and it's also something that can be tracked. I mean, we could observe through looking at those websites. Um, and let them know that, yes, they can do that, but they have to get a perm, uh, they have to get a business license and pay the tax.
I can track it through the website. General Assembly has set it up so we get on that including payments for transmittances from Airbnb. So we have a third-party company that handles that in the state. Um, but naturally, there's a conversation about getting that visibility well enough for people or for stuff like inspections, that's where it gets a little bit tougher to kind of have that visibility. But it's doable, at least with checking listing to over.
And if we're set up through to get that money from Airbnb, would they know based upon an address if it was in town and automatically send it to us?
They know it, but they send it as a toll.
And you have to find out what it represents, we're still playing that game, that's crazy.
Uh, it's a little bit tough going back and forth.
Yeah, I could imagine.
Yeah, so I can try again, but it's been a little bit difficult getting the regular details, but it's better than what it was before, where I had to also look for it and also deal with a lot of tax enforcement. The convenience of it is that it's pulling it automatically, so it leads to more compliance because uh, other issues, just having compliance with, uh, paying your taxes, I don't know how more help I can make.
Um, and do they know, how do they know what houses are in town versus in the county, counties?
They should know that.
Okay, like they have a map in their system?
But I don't, I'm not, I can't tell you more than that.
Well, hopefully it'll get easier if there's a department that's dedicated for it now, maybe they'll start getting a little bit sharper.
Um, they did time, which I appreciate.
Okay. And, um, Ms. Carter, on the, the other lodgings, motels, hotels are regulated, I, I assume they have to have those inspections, but what about Airbnb? You said, no, they don't, they haven't?
Their homeowners inspection is.
Okay. Okay.
Are we talking about in Almarle County or just in general?
Well, she was referring to Buckingham and I.
Cause Almarle does require it.
Does, do they?
Mm-hmm.
For home stays?
Yes. Fire and safety inspection, building safety.
And what about the city of Charlottesville? Cause I, I don't, I'm trying to think of my friend who does it, I don't think he had the inspection, but it doesn't mean anything. And, you know, the county has their own people, so I guess they have that resource. Whereas we would have to contact a certified fire inspector, whatever that means, I don't know, maybe someone in the volunteer squad has that.
Somebody's paid fire department. Some of the volunteers, previous. But they are paid. But they are paid unless it's a volunteer.
And I don't, I mean, I don't think you could just.
And Almarle, the state car marshal does inspection, Matt.
I, I'd imagine they have their own.
I don't think so.
You don't think they'll have a.
They, they have their own, I think.
Yeah, I would imagine they do have their own. They have their own everything.
Yeah, I think they're big enough to.
Mara, yeah. Yeah, I mean, I just feel like.
I, I would feel like if you do that because long, much of state, then they'll feel like they're seeing without from the Airbnb's and.
It might come down to what is the risk to the town? Should something happen? Is there any downside to that?
Yeah, I don't think we would be incurring any risk because we're not requiring anyone else get their houses inspected, like. I mean, even individuals, if they have mortgage, a mortgage, then their mortgage company requires insurance. And will do periodic inspections. I don't know how much of it is for safety, but. Um, I don't think there should be any liability on our part.
It might be if there's no risk to the town, then maybe, you know, it's. But if there is a risk, then you might wanna rethink.
Well, at the least, I don't think we should enact that provision for home stays unless we're doing it across the board for the short-term lodging. And then the next question is, should we do that for rentals too? But I, I mean, I work in property management and we don't have any such requirement in the county, the city where rentals are inspected. When I say the city, I mean, the city of Charlottesville. So I, I would, I don't know, I'm, I'm not inclined to support this. Okay, so what other questions do we have? She'll check with Mr. Bowling to see what he suggests. Um, perhaps we'll be able to vote on this next go around. So can you include for us the text again? Cause it's been quite a long time since we saw it. It might be helpful to get eyes on it again. Thank you. Okay, any other questions for us to look into on that? All right. Five B V dot approval received for East Village subdivision.
Yeah, I did get a lot of kind of V dot for the they have approved their um, development, their development plans by line of grades of engineering. So I advise them that they, their next step would get their then permit to be done, but also I guess I can, but I know that they have to bring to the town office to get a final approval on that map. And approve erosion, center control plan and the health department sign off before V dot signs it too. Now, everything I find in the records is preliminary. Doesn't the final have to come back to you all? Like the staff approved the final. Matt said it was approved, so they just have to jump through all these foods. So I just wanna make sure.
I think the final comes back to us when they've when everything else has been approved and they're ready to place the houses and we'll review. Cause the preliminary, preliminary that they gave us was more about streets and showing that there was ample room for a house with the setbacks. But I think they still need to approve the actual placement of the house.
Is this for this forty-sixth house?
Yeah, East Village. Yeah, because um, because it's a special use permit, it, oh, it is not a special use permit. Oh, so then you know what? I'm not sure if we do have that um, authority. It's a subdivision, so in that sense.
You have, you have authority to ensure that they do all the things, the regulations that you have to give to be. Town will have to sign that. But it is by rights.
Right, right, right.
No, when I told Matt about it, he said it was really approved, the preliminary was approved. But that was only thing right on that was to make sure they jumped along with data.
Right. All right, well, we'll have to look into that. Um, the subdivision ordinance is very manageable. It's not it's not as crazy as the rest of it. Um, so I'm sure it should be pretty easy to figure that out. We'll have to look at that. Old Business five C, consider establishment of a committee. Roundtable discussions with V dot, V dot regarding safety, um, street safety concerns and other V dot matters. So this came up because we've, um, on several occasions talked about how we'd like to have V dot and traffic and safety experts. Maybe not V dot, but a traffic and safety expert talk to us and, and come here to our town. Walk around and make some suggestions for us. So I said, Matt, we, we, we talked about it enough times and we finally said, look, just get somebody in here. We need to have a conversation. We need to talk about things. That we're constantly talking about uh, traffic in town and whether traffic is an issue or not. Sidewalks, how to improve pedestrian crossings and make, make the town more safe. Uh, we have very unique streets because they're so narrow. Um, some of them are two ways. We have many streets that don't have sidewalks. We have kids standing outside in the morning and coming home in the afternoon and don't have sidewalks for them. And so we just have a lot of questions about what we can do to make our town safe. And the infrastructure that comes with that, um, where you'll hear me say again and again, we're a town of five hundred and fifty people. We don't have a very large budget, but we are constantly talking about improvements and infrastructure and things that we'd like to see done. And how do we make that happen if we don't have a large budget? So we wanted to have a conversation with V dot. We, we scrapped the sidewalk that was scheduled. We scrapped that one because it just didn't make sense anymore. We can go back when we have a better idea of what sidewalks we're looking for and where and where we're gonna get the money from. But what can we do in the interim to make our streets safer? So I, I wanted to walk around town with somebody. An expert, a traffic consultant, a safety consultant to say, you know, what about these intersections? And simultaneously scan the Scottsville Center for Arts and the Natural Environment was having a conversation with V dot about painting streets. And we've talked about that also in, in our previous meetings, painting the corridor coming into town to try to make people realize you're coming into a town. This is a community. There's gonna be children walking. This is a pedestrian-friendly environment. It's not um, just getting you to where you need to go. Just be mindful as you come into town and ways to get people to be mindful of safety. Um, so Scan was also talking with them about that and I reached out to V dot to say, this is what we want from you. And finally, they said, well, how about we bring all these stakeholders to the table and have a sit down? And I think that's a great idea because I know we don't have all the ideas here and there's people who have ideas and opinions and we'd like to get them to have a seat at the table too. So here we are now, V dot has suggested, let's have a roundtable and I think that's a fantastic idea. So who do we identify as wanting to participate in that and should it be something that's open to the public? Um, I want it to be solution oriented, so I don't.
They should suggest that the first would come to their residency office. And they can bring in the people that need to speak with us. That might be the start.
Residency office?
People to come out and walk our streets. That was their suggestion at first. So we were recommending to call, I mean, usually many problems with safety and streets. That we could have two commissioners to council members. And I think some from staff and, and Mr. Lewis to um, be on that committee. And hopefully this would be a start of addressing a lot of issues, but the first would be addressing this issue. Because we do see all that, you're right. You see, I've come to Scottville yesterday and run around the streets and you do see very narrow, you know, you gotta watch where it's listed.
Not a J rock.
You know, so, and so we would, if you all would appoint two, then you wouldn't, you wouldn't have to have a public, you wouldn't have to have a meeting, legal meeting, and then the council had to.
Good idea.
I think that helps focus a little bit, I think, on both sides. Um, they would appreciate that. So just local staff from V dot first having that conversation. Um, like Ms. Carter said, for meeting requirements. Um, I think we already have something to start chewing on from what you described. Um, between Scan, between paneling commission, between probably the town council staff, putting inside staff as. What? I think this, from the conversation we had, this would probably be the first conversation, started addressing those more framework details. First meeting, Hope Pepper, Charles, and then Scottsville together. Hope Pepper and Charles is V dot staff. And then Scottsville last.
And the, the part like you said, that would be good for them to come here and walk the streets or and see the meaning, then he could find out what grants may be there. To dress, if you dress the safety, that's what they're looking for. That's gonna help you qualify.
Safety and accessibility is another big one. I've been looking into grants and accessibility. It's big. I was walking across from We Grow the other day and somebody had parked too close and thought, I, you know, I had to step out into traffic really to see beyond the car. And I thought, if you had, were in a wheelchair or if you had a baby carriage or you had some kind of assistive device, that might be really um, dangerous. So I think you can come at it from both those. Uh, whether it's revitalization, which is good to have a walkable community. Um, accessibility and public safety. Those are three areas. I think it's a great idea. There's been a lot of commentary in the strategic plan about sidewalks. And to your point, Cher, about um, you know, big group, small group. My experience has been, it's probably good to get at least some, some lens of a vision first before you get it too broad. Otherwise, there's just so much churn in information. It'd be better to have something to put in front of people to say, this is kind of what we're thinking, but it's just a suggestion, something.
Don't tail off of that, I think, for V dot, so they could select the correct staff from a big organization. Uh, suggestion from staff is maybe having some direction, some questions they would like, so we can pull the correct ones. Uh, for staff members to join us. And then we're structured conversation. Um, we don't have everyone here from our corps, so maybe follow up through email with um, the council itself. Oh, sorry, the uh, commission itself uh, would be helpful, yeah.
To identify the specific concerns and questions that we have.
Yeah, it'll help them pull the right staff to answer questions for us and it'll help them answer the question for us.
And do we have a sidewalk master plan? Cause we, we've had a plan for trails and, and sidewalk ability in the past. That, which we've deviated from over the last ten years or so. But it's, it's an older plan that we talked about when we had the Tiger Fuel Market. Because they, you know, didn't have sidewalks planned for that market and we were like, well, sidewalks are important and we do have a plan. We, we had talked about this. Okay, I'll, I'll have to look back at my emails, but I, I know there's something out there that talks about potential trails, not and, and maybe it's not sidewalks, but it was potential trails that we might want to work towards in the future. I think we need something like that going forward, cause that's a little outdated at this point. There were some places on there that we haven't had any conversation about recently and maybe it's for the better. Maybe we have nixed those ideas, but something updated so that we can prioritize what sidewalks need to be put in if we're going to be, if we're gonna get money somehow to put sidewalks in.
Would there be, do you anticipate some kind of zoning ordinance change to make sure that sidewalks are built into new developments?
We have such an ordinance in, in our um. Commercial developments are required to put in sidewalks. Tiger Fuel didn't see that part of our ordinance when they put together their preliminary plat. And we immediately at that first meeting said, where are the sidewalks? And they said, oh, you want sidewalks. And we're like, well. We, we pointed to several places where it exists in our code that says we want sidewalks on commercial developments. So it has to be something, in addition to being in the code, it has to be something that we're thinking of and talking about in future town administrators know this is a priority and let's make sure it's in our future commercial developments. So it exists in the code for commercial developments. Um, residential, I don't think they need to have sidewalks. Um, they do if it's subdivision above fifty units. Fifty is the magic number.
But we can make changes to that.
Can we? We can, sure.
And I only mention it because before Matt left, um, he did mention in the strategic plan about considering zoning changes for sidewalks. That was one of the things that he he walked, um, he and Javier and I sat down and walked through it before he left. So it's something for you all, you may wanna consider, follow up on that.
Well, the subdivision ordinance could use some um, updating. Especially since we don't have anything on the agenda right now regarding subdivisions. Now is a good time to make any improvements before the next application comes before us. So maybe lowering that threshold. Well, I don't know. I guess it would depend. We, we'd have to take a look at. Well, all of the zoning could be updated. Doesn't even have to be just the subdivision, but. Okay, so you want us to come up with some priorities that, that we'd like to talk about in that roundtable regarding safety, sidewalks, accessibility, all that. And um. I want Scan to have a seat at the table in that meeting. Okay. Are there any other community partners that should be there? The Boys and Girls Club, churches? How big should this be?
I'll suggest the first meeting smaller, so we can establish between the commission and V dot.
Who's, who is the person to have?
And then to Carter's point, then we start uh, holding in community members.
Okay.
A little bit to Morse's point, she started with.
Right, okay. Okay, all right, we'll work on that.
Uh, would you wanna speak to commissioners pending and?
Yeah, um, but also send out an email. I'll, so. Yeah, because um. I'm sure Molly will have some input and I know Dan will as well, but so think. I'm sure Molly will have some input and I know Dan will as well, but so think through it for yourself and Shannon. Think through safety and accessibility and sidewalks and, um, concerns that you have. And I know Shannon, you've mentioned it several, in several meetings that it's concerned, so I'm sure you'll have some great input.
Yeah, yeah, and then when, when we get there too, I think it would be nice to engage the Chamber of Commerce, because I bet they have a lot of. Ideas about, um, you know, they're running the farmer's market and, and, um. And in touch with the businesses downtown, so I, I'm sure they hear about parking and all of that, so.
Okay, very good. Okay, so can we, can we get a meeting set up?
Yes, uh, if you all want to point to.
Okay. Okay. Okay, um. Is that something that you are interested in, either of you? Are you sure? Okay, because I guess that's winding down, the strategic plan is winding down, right? Okay. Shannon, would you like to participate in that, or do you have your hands full?
I could definitely do that.
Okay, great, thank you. All right. All right, so Ms. Carter will arrange that meeting. And loop you in. If you could loop all of us in, that would be great.
Thank you.
Okay. New business, comprehensive plan. Yeah, it was gonna say. Long term, there you go. This is getting thicker.
Yes. But, um, glad to, uh, lead you through the PowerPoints and, uh. Looking for the agenda on page two, I enlarged the page numbers that I thought I was very. Okay, uh, so this is the proposed agenda, that's okay for this section of meeting. Recap what we discussed last week, uh, document review, talk about the one drive. Review the structure of the, uh, twenty eighteen cop and then talk about public engagement plan and then the next steps. Okay, moving on to slide number three, uh, the previous meeting, uh, here, here on twenty second May. And key decisions that were discussed mainly, uh, proving, uh. The, uh, end of twenty twenty-three, yes, uh, target condition of the company. Number two, uh, scope of the update is targeted strategic updates. Uh, and this was focusing on broad range community engagements and finding areas of consensus, which are parks and trails to really drive a discussion. In terms of timeline, um, we're looking at option three, arguing revisions, we agree on. So the next step after this that we were discussing was updating the town council Monday, both the June period of work session. So maybe if we proceed through these slides today, um, it's more secret, uh, kind of guidance, if it would be appropriate, we can update the town council. Next Monday.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to slide number four, so I updated the timeline a bit, uh, based on the guidance received at the previous meeting. Uh, so what I sensed was, uh, the commissioners were going to want to a few more engagement sessions. Uh, particularly with Boys and Girls, uh, and Gansville Community Center, uh, baseball soccer games, so to word. So I just put those as plate holders, uh, at the top section. And then, uh, down at the bottom, let's say the four, for instance, these are the stakeholder listening sessions. So throughout. The slides today, um, I suggested we talk a little more about how do we achieve additional. Uh, engagement sessions, these important stakeholders. So I know some of these groups, uh, you know, really excited commissioners, uh, and they're important to engagement. Okay, I suggest we also come back to the slide a little bit later. Moving on to, uh, number six, share the one drive. Okay. So this is the, uh, make do internet, where it's, that, uh, I created on the town's one drive. It's a folder, uh, that all of the planning commission, including, and the council of Squitzko and Morse today joining us. And then Tom said, have access to. In, uh, slide number seven, it's next slide, uh. It just kind of outlined what's in the drive right now or what the tab. Um, currently there are the folders for the draft and materials, there's word document in there. That's the twenty eighteen campaign, the project is enabled. So, uh, anyone on the team can go in and, uh, you know, start making some suggested edits. We're making some common bubble, uh, suggestions. Uh, as your thoughts arise, either early at night, early in the morning if you wake up. Or during the day. Um, so as we start updating the drawings. I'll be, uh, working with the Thomas Travis and planning district commission, uh, getting their drawings, I think, and also put the, uh. The draft lines in there, where you can take a look at. I've already created a notes file in there. If you have any notes, you're not, you're not really sure where the thought or idea should go in the cop man. You can just write it down on a notes file, and then we, and others can see it too. And lastly, I put the Gant chart in there. Moving on to that.
Wait, what's the Gant chart? Is that the timeline? I didn't know it had a fancy name, okay.
By the name of Mr. Gat, I guess. Uh, folder number two is, uh, town information. So, uh, I put the previous twenty eighteen cop in there. The small area plan, uh, the active nature preserve master plan, which includes some nation trails. I do understand that some trail could be added or amended. And, uh, moving on to folder number three is the other cop plans, for instance, Elmore County's ongoing work. I put the phase two document in there. And a few other, uh, top bands, for instance, Richmond and some other towns that compare the size to. Scottsville, and if you come up with any others, please, uh, fill them in there too. Okay, moving on to slide number eight, um, thank you so much for your earlier email about Elmore County's, uh. AC forty-four, complex. So, uh, just kind of put in some screenshots, you can see their goals, so they're working on. Uh, number nine, slide number nine, uh, it's just a little bit more about it. Previous discussion we had last week was looking at how, uh, Scottville might want to engage in the complex process for the county. Because, uh, if you look at these three images on the slide, uh, the first image on the left is really focusing on services. So as you can see in the southern part of the county, uh. Scottsville and the surrounding vicinity has a lot of services that add to the, the south of the county. In the, the middle, uh, diagram or map, you can see that, you know, Scottsville is not mentioned. Uh, this, this map is really focusing on rural areas. But you can also see on the map in the middle, uh, that there's actually nothing there to signify anything having to do with Scottsville. The map is really blank. Then on the right hand side, you can see, um. They're focusing on crossroads communities, however, the legend is on top of Scottsville.
We didn't even make it to the map, but I'm sorry, what is a crossroads community?
Well, they're basically, uh, prompting and discussing the county about how to strategize certain, uh. We can call it road corridors or transit corridors, and these, uh, existing communities. They might have a general store or a few houses. And, uh, they could be landmarks, or they could be sites of future infrastructure improvements. I e, uh, money flowing in there from B dot. So, uh, it might be important to be in this discussion. Because, uh, if, uh, Scottsville was a crossroads community or a hub or some other constipation. This could be a, you know, one sort of funnel for infrastructure management.
Well, I, I mean, we're, by all means, we meet that definition. I mean, number.
Go ahead. So they have five definitions of different areas in the county. Crossroads fits the closest, like Lincoln and to that, what everybody say. Scottville doesn't exactly fit, because you have to think of S Mon, uh, Barbersville, um. Early still, those are thought as crossroad communities with like a one general store or two or three things. And their centers of like activity, I think it's, they use some kind of phrasing, some kind of planning phrasing. But, um, Scott still kind of sits into that, but not exactly from the definition that AC forty-four uses. And if you search the AC forty-four phase two document, Scottsville is actually not in the text. It is mentioned on the, the plan on the left-hand side of the slide, and you can see Scottsville surrounded by a bunch of service icons. But in terms of being, Scottville being acknowledged as an incorporated community, it's not mentioned, or shown on the real map. And part of it is, we do have a planning commission. We are a town, but also there's, like you point, there might be some fruitfulness and continuing conversation in the county. We are a service hub in the broadest term, or which around the area. We are a crossroads community in some places.
Right. And we definitely pay taxes. In fact, none of our real estate tax goes to the town, all of it goes to the county, so we should be. I mean. Our role at least should be acknowledged and, I mean, I know that there's public discussions and we've had an opportunity to provide input, but. I missed this day.
Yeah, you know, the image on the right-hand side of the slide, uh, it, it precludes, uh, Scottsville from even the discussion. So, yeah, I'm, I'm, uh.
Yeah.
Concerned for how the town would fit into this. That's why on slide number ten. Uh, Javier, thank you so much for alerting us that, you know, tomorrow they're having open houses, Walton knows. Yeah, so if the planning commissioner would want, I would possibly go back to the ten and listen in. Report back, or we can ask a few questions. Or if any commissioners would like to go also, I think that would also be very fruitful. Um, and then other methods we can engage in the complex of planning processes for the county, we can talk to, uh. And there's many other avenues we share. Tending Walton would be good, because we see their process, how they're defining different areas of the county. And then looking at, uh, what their approach is to grow. In regards to that four quadrants that Louis showed earlier, those are the kind of their guiding principles. Uh, so Walton is our closest one, and it is the one that they're trying to have. Uh, the part of the county.
Oh, okay, gotcha, the crossroad.
Yeah, they have the one that, uh, two weeks ago, that the one that's out tomorrow. The little stool behind Almore, I can't remember which one, but that's not this area, Walton is the closest one, showing patterns, so I suggest.
Is this the rural, rural communities that I saw advertised in the email tomorrow? Is that the one?
Uh, sessions, uh, across the county this, this week or the next week? So, yeah, we're going through the phases.
Okay.
But this is often useful, uh, for the town's own process, kind of understanding of the philosophy. New badge point, how others would do the process of. Uh, okay, moving on. That the existing, uh, comp plan has seven hundred pages in the company. And some of the feedback I've heard so far, this is not everything, but just the main things that come to mind. The document is quite long and hard to digest. And the goals, objectives and strategies are extensive and fine-grained, it's difficult to find a place within the forest. And the maps are hard to read. For instance, I was paging through looking for any mention of sidewalks, but. The drawings are so hard to read, you couldn't even see there's sidewalks there. So I think that's really good, um, uh, feedback, um, and also the B dot discussion.
Um, excuse me, just so that you know, maps are on the agenda for the working session. So it would be good to potentially get some input into that. Um, there's quite a bit of activity going on around maps. Um, for the kiosks, for emergency purposes, for trails, for. And there is a small line item in the budget to redo maps, but I don't think we've come to agreement on what. Maps we really want, so it'd be great to have input from you all on what you think is important. Uh, that might serve multiple purposes, right? If we're gonna do a town map, we want that to include sidewalks and things like that. So it would be, you know, helpful to have your input on that, I think, okay?
This is a major, uh, laying on the left-hand side of the, in different parts of the existing comp plan. The number of pages in the middle, and then some, lots of recommendations on how we can approach this. The first three sections are really front matter, executive summary and table of contents. Typically for documents, except that the content is, executive summary is really, uh, short, two pages, sort of that. Help a, uh, nascent reader really digest the key points. So I do think executive summary is really important. But I recommend that, that remains pretty much as it. Um, moving on to section one, preface, uh, this includes a foreword. And then, uh, talks about what is comprehensive plan, which I think is generally useful. Moving on to section two, profile of town of Scottsville, and this includes a historical sketch and background summary. You, you might realize, uh, later in the document that basically this potentially has overlap with section four. Uh, so I guess we need to read this a little bit in about twenty seconds. Moving on down to the slide, uh, the hash mark is objectives and strategies. So in the layout of the comp plan, this is kind of written as its own chapter, but it's not numbered as a chapter. Uh, so that might be something that we, uh, you know, grew upon to make it more readable. Uh, but you can see here, eh, these are the different objectives and strategies. So, um, I, I understand the comp, uh, plan, uh. Uh, process that you've already been going through, and a couple months ago, you're in the strength to review these objectives and strategies. And it's also, uh, it involves great timeism. Initiative council forces are working on that. The, uh, various strategic priorities and such. Um, so this in the, in the content right now is sixteen pages. And, um, basically, you know, it, it is a lot of strategy and so forth there. That, that sort of look to read through, uh, and as well repeated language, uh. For instance, small town characters mentioned many times, which, which, uh, I think is, uh, you know, worthwhile characteristic, but. I think there is a lot of repetition that might be, uh, you know, you know, straightened out, as you're saying. And, uh, then another question, you know, I was having was going through, uh. Russell Morrison's work, you know, we have these six objectives. And through this process, is this mentioned funnel into the comprehensive plan? And if so, we, we would need to do quite a lot of rewriting to have matching all of. Uh, not all of these six objectives would be entirely relevant for the comprehensive plan, for instance. Sound government practices might not physically relate to the town. There might be some. Some linkages in some ways, but I think the other five, we really need to focus on and align the comp plan to this process.
Yeah, I think that's where the, the bulk of the overlap, although there may be one or two things in the strategies. And just if I could, um, piggyback on your discussion here. It's my hope that right now I have a lot of strategies that have come from the planning commission. Some from the town council, but mostly the work we started together, and then from the public sessions I've been having. The session I had with Matt, there have been other inputs that I've just been collecting. There are quite a few. I would like to get that to no more than four and sort of each, uh. Uh, goal, if you will, so there's several goals per objective. And then to have no more than four sort of activity or projects. And that's where the planning of the strategic plan comes in, and that I would like to work. And that's where the planning of the strategic plan comes in and that I would like to work closely. With you all on that and put that before the council once you all have sort of. Seen that and worked the prioritization of those strategies. And so, for example, walkability uh could be a a major goal. There are several strategies how we could improve that. We talked about sidewalk activity. We talked about crosswalks. We talked about. A lot of things. There are a lot of inputs there, but what are the most. Important, the most achievable in the one, two, and four-year timeframe. Right? That we can all focus on. Once we have those strategies, we can present them to the council. Make sure they agree and then both bodies can kind of work in that common direction.
Mm-hmm.
So that was sort of the intent.
Is there a question? Well, I think, and as far as it relates to this, this is, it's. Supposed to be updated every five years, but it's really a long-range picture, so those are more immediate. Whereas this might be more long-term visualization also. We may not be able to realize all the, you know, all the goals in the comp plan in.
And I don't think they should be necessarily all called out in the comp plan, but I think we should be in sync in terms of at least. The objectives and the goals, right? And then the activities will change over the years and these these um. Priorities that are those six priorities that are listed in that document, they'll probably have to be updated in five years. So it should sync with the redoing of the comp plan, right?
Hmm.
Each each five years, the town council will review priorities. Then submit them to the planning commission and then you all decide if there's any changes to the comp plan that needs to be done and that those two. Are held in sync.
Hmm.
And you were speaking of the subdivision ordinance and zoning ordinance needing to be. That also needs to sync with this. So the time to do those would be when the comp plan's approved.
Right.
It all needs to sync together.
Right?
So it's really a filtering process for the strategic discussion, for the garden comp plan, which is also long-term. And also uh these more administrative documents, like uh that's.
I mean, ideally, they would all be in sync, ideally, right? And understand that nothing is perfect and whatnot.
But um you know, some of the 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 goals in the contact from you are very detailed sentences of their statements. Um typically, what I've seen in the compliance uh before is the simpler uh goal statements, very concise.
Right.
But they're also flexible over time, you know, they're they're catch-all of them.
It's a good point that you raise, and one of the things I just, right now on the plan, I started capturing the ideas. From the planning commission. That was our first meeting, right? So I just sort of put things in buckets. There was always a revision process and I'm going through that now to sort of bring those goals up to a more. Abstract level, if you will, and then move some of those activities that are listed now as goals into the actual strategy section. Uh Matt had done a really good job at sort of a first take on that. And I'm trying to go through that, so it might be good to meet on that um. Um with Matthew, Molly, with you, uh Mister Lewis. Um to get those at the right level where there's enough fungibility in there and they're not. They don't tie anyone down. So I hear your your point and it's well made.
Yeah, and just to, you know, we s- we say that that some of the the goals of the comp plan right now, they're very long statements. By the time you get done reading the one or two sentences. And there's some repetition in there as in every, almost every goal, which is small town character, you know. You you.
In the existing plan you're talking about.
Start to lose focus when you're reading yourself.
Yeah.
So that's why I I actually do appreciate a strategic planning process right now with. The distributed priorities are very powerful matters with a simple statement, simple powerful statements. And I do see a lot of what we've been talking about in the word detail can fit within those simple statements like uh. For instance, sensibility law, that's that's sidewalks, walkability, safety, so. Um so.
And it's interesting in that line, if you drill down, how it includes different stakeholders like animals and wildlife, which. I'm not sure the existing comprehensive plan includes that, so we've been talking about dog parks and this and that.
Hmm.
Other things that would include, how do we integrate pets and wildlife into our small town character, right?
Um so, for instance, natural resources is mentioned under uh item C here on the slide. Historic scenic and natural resources. But I did notice when I was reading the comp plan that. Natural resources does not have as much emphasis in the comp plan as I've been hearing, for instance, thankfully, nature preserve, uh so support. Uh scans were supposed to, so that's one item that might need to be elevated further. More uh more prominent goal. So that's just one, one that I'll just keep moving on to slide number fourteen. Uh I think the easier is implementation plan. This is more forward looking course. This is right in the middle of the document. One consideration might be for moving a little bit towards the end of the document. And then here at number four again, the background information is kind of towards the end of the document. You might wanna move the background information. Back up to to section number two. I know there is some concerns sometimes with writing a document, you get too much background information at the beginning and people lose focus. Reading, but I I do think it's important to have it as a secret. So that's something I suggest we take a look at. Number five, public spaces. These are all really important public spaces for the town. And uh they're kind of at the end of the document, disjointed from a lot of the concepts that are towards the front of the document. So what I'm proposing is uh these one or two page summaries. Might be better as box story within the document. Let's say you're talking about historic preservation document. Why not include canal basis square in that section? So it's really relatable, not padded in the document. Uh lastly, in the zoning summary, this is this is an important section.
Sorry, Lincoln, can I um chime in one second?
Sure.
Um I, for the public spaces, I don't see uh Bruce Park listed there.
Yeah, so we we can also add more spaces. Um I think Bruce Park is a good one that we can add. It just it's it's not in the existing document right now.
Okay. Well, we don't have lower bird either. And that's a big talking point because that's something that needs to be planned out.
Farmer's market.
As a public space, yep, farmer's market. So I I don't know, I don't know how detailed we want this to get, but. I mean, is this? I don't remember the context that these were in there. Was was it just talking about our available assets?
Yes, for the other documents, they're about two-page summaries, talking about what these basements are. For instance, canal basis square has the two-page, two paragraphs, but some photographs. And then the next page was about three paragraphs. Um really talking about the restoration of the pack of so, but some of some of these things that aren't even done. I I guess about total was restored, so we need to update that information. Victory of all is mentioned here as another topic space. Control for uh so what we can do, uh we can create a talent of these things and uh. You know, friends in Bruce Park, uh lower birds, so support, and we can add in. Whether it be uh small box stories or just a whole page or two on parks. Along with the back teeth, of course, in this section that might want to elevate the natural environments of the town.
Another point about um backtracking a little bit, implementation plan. Um one of the talking points that was made when we discussed the comp plan here in the planning commission a couple of months back was. Perhaps the implementation plan should be in each section where the objectives and strategies are rather than its own section.
Yep.
I don't remember who suggested that, but it was a good idea.
Yeah, that's that's a that's a good strategy. We can uh see how it's in, it's a lot of high fitness. Okay, um so let's see uh. The last thing I was going to mention here on zoning summary and appendix uh. Is that there's there is some red text in there and I believe that's the new slash updated uh text from from the previous comp plan. Uh that 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 those amendments would be necessary, were necessary when the comp plan is updated, so those are the. Those what were added in the zone text, I guess, and she, so there's just no, it's the red text in the menu or section. And of course, you know, also to see what changes in the comp plan necessitate zoning test amendments in the future too. Uh okay, slide number fifteen, um this is a running list of potential items to add. I'll add in the bird part, so important. Um so consider how to incorporate and link relevant documents, so I think this is uh. Mr. I advise a suggestion, uh when we read that or put in the appendix. Well, two is add the smaller area plan. This is mentioned in the comp plan, but having them done. We need to add at that clearly. Electric vehicle charging needs to be uh probably clearly indicated uh. The town now has a contracted electric vehicle charging company. That equipment will be installed soon, maybe by fiscal year. Um but uh basically, Javier and I attended a Zoom with the construction and planning commission that was about two weeks ago. And Sarah talking about a lot of transport money grants regarding electric vehicles and other uh. Other types of planning vehicles sold by the future. And there can be a lot of money uh gained by communities if you're in uh this space. Uh you may be eliminating the steps of uh electric vehicle trucking stations, getting a master plan as your. So I think we need to have a section.
But did you say we have some planned?
There there's a trucking station that's going to be installed.
That Tiger Fuel? Where?
Uh in uh the city parking lot. Please sign off on it last summer.
Here, this parking lot?
Is it only one, Javier?
It's two.
I so I thought it was two.
But it was last summer, uh but they're slowly moving forward.
I don't remember hearing about that. That's awesome. Tiger Tiger Fuel was very much on the fence when we raised that for them. They were like, oh, we'll see. I hope that it's something that they really go back to revisit. I mean, it'd be nice to have more than just two.
Because uh he is talking about uh eliminating these uh new fuel corridors. So uh basically each charging station has to be within fifty miles of each other on a corridor. So for instance, like here. The uh Sean is from the environment, for instance, you know, Scott was a great charging place, wanted to stop over and have a lunch and try to do.
I think the town gets some money from that, right?
Yeah, so we could look into that. Another possibility also is. Uh our comprehensive plan could have language for the regional planning and there's other avenues, especially um. The creativity that regional planning has with different public transportation, like a show. Perchance, and there's opportunities with those sometimes. Uh but remember, it's a complex, and we want to kind of plan it at, we need to always open it for us in like twenty years.
Okay, so let's make sure we mention that.
So, gosh. Okay, uh next bullet, I'll be focused on uh culture and safety. This is really aligned with the B-Dot discussion. Uh following that accessibility gap, some of the people from getting around town, that's strategic discussions. And then adding the uh map of Dan Flint Zone. Uh this is one of the discussions we have about uh. The safety around town, also the female uh flood that the rivers has been out there isn't possible to be identified by. Like, you know, this is one of the advantage. So obviously, you'd be wrapped in that.
I I just have a question for the commission on that is. Do we have any different zoning, you know, there any zoning ordinances that change based on. Uh which zone you're in in terms of, you know, the emergency management zone, flood zones and things like that? Is that typical? Would that show up in a comprehensive plan?
But definitely would be eliminated on the map, making people aware that if you. Purchase property in the zone, you might be under the dam. That's it's it's also designated on the Alamo County G I S website.
Mm-hmm.
That's what I saw actually a few weeks ago. So Alamo County shows Scottville, they have, I think it's important that Scottville might want to show that to the community of the comprehensive.
And the Scottsville maps that are going on, they're also redoing the flood zone, so there's different color-coded zones. So if there is a flood or any kind of other type of disaster in town that. Where the higher risk areas are. And then looking at evacuation routes and things like that. So there's an awful lot going on right now. In the area of emergency preparedness, I've been working on some of that with some folks.
Hmm.
So I didn't know if it might have some kind of crossover into the work y'all are doing on the comprehensive planning.
There is one uh existing drawing in the comp plan focusing on the female flood map. We could add additional layers for this kind of emergency matters. I think that might be worthwhile.
Um to that point, do we um? Is it documented anywhere? Um who runs the pumps? I've I've heard several times from people um around town. Um like what happens in the case of a a town flooding event? Who's uh who's on deck to run those pumps? I know that, you know, they were calling for volunteers the last time we had, it was a few years ago. When we had that really heavy flooding for people to take shifts and run the pumps overnight, but is that documented anywhere or not?
Well, we we certainly have someone who's responsible, right? Tim.
Yeah.
Tim Carr is responsible for that and his team.
Okay.
Because to that point, your regional emergency management is one kicking. And you're gonna have state people here and female people here to help. With all that. So we were speaking about that, and I was looking into that.
We were, um Ms. Carter is actually as town administrator is the emergency management coordinator.
Okay.
For the towns.
Of what?
For, well, for the town, if an emergency occurs, she's the point person and one of the, you know, emergency. Management requirements is you have to have access to funds and things like that. So the mayor is the spokesperson, but we're going through, I've actually been trying to work to get the um. A sort of a public version of the emergency management plan put together, because right now most of it is detailed technical information. And I'd like to get a brochure put together for residents, for property owners, for things like um. Signing up for code red, which is the county alert system. To let people know that there is a siren in town that will go off if there's a flood and, you know, what that siren means. I didn't even know until I, you know, I started on council that we had a siren.
Yeah.
And then with the recent fire, a lot of people have been asking me uh as town council representative about. How do we get alerted? So if that fire had been a much bigger incident. How do businesses, how do property owners, how do residents get alerted to the fact that there is an emergency in town? And um that their property or, God forbid, even lives would be at stake, so um. So all of these things are in motion.
Great. Alright, thank you.
That's a great idea.
For instance, on the in the content right now, there's sixty-three years, uh one small section of public safety, just two paragraphs. And a picture of uh the uh the uh rescue squad, I guess. But it's not really that meaningful, I I guess I I can suggest, and perhaps the the commission would consider. Linking to another documents or filling this section out of the book. Uh also, the hundred year pub play is shown on page fifty-five, along with slopes, uh most important. So this could be another place that the dam uh. So this could be another place that the dam, uh, flood is all could be overlaid. So everyone could be aware that, you know, if the dam did break, then this sort of zone will be, uh, in that hazard zone.
Right, your cars will be underwater if you're parked in this area, right? And, and just to, to piggyback on that, it's not just the dam, right? So if the river overflows and the floodgates are open, if main creek continues to flow, it could potentially spill over and we could still have flooding, right? So these are the things that I've learned that I think people in general need to know about in terms of their businesses or residents here in town in the various zones.
Well, the flooding that we've had in recent years has come from the creek, not from the river. So yeah, it's, it's very relevant.
Right. So for new residents and things like that, it's important that they understand that.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it goes back to the conversation we had earlier. If you're a homeowner, you know, because you're getting insurance or you're getting a, a, a mortgage and you're required to have flood insurance in certain areas. But if you're a renter or if you're, uh, perhaps even a business owner or consumer, you may not realize.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so this is just the running list. I will put this list into a folder and, and we can, uh, if you have any other ideas that we can add, uh, please, please, please. I will also add a mention of, uh, there's other, uh, public safety, such as police park, North Burn, Economic Market, that we need to write more about. Okay, uh, moving on to public engagement plan. Let's look at slide number seventeen. Okay, so, uh, matrix of the typical engagement methods. I, I have grayed out some things that we're not, uh, really focusing on so far. Don't plan on, I don't think. But the items is black, uh, we talked about, and I think we're, we're proceeding, uh, on this. So, uh, first method is web page flyers. This is a passive method of getting the word out about the comp plan. Uh, you can see the pros and the cons. Um, and I'll, I'll mention, uh, a little bit more about web page branding and promotion by this slide. But this is just, the purpose of slide seventeen is just to kind of give a, a reminder on the different methods we can, we can use to get the word out. Uh, both, uh, passive, like I mentioned, and also active. Community survey, uh, listening events, public workshop. And then of course, at the very bottom is the public meeting or no conference.
Um, it might be helpful just on this, uh, to consider the Scottsville Monthly has started publishing just an article maybe on that, you know, some small feature to say the comp plan is in progress. Um, and that you'll be looking to outreach to the public at some point in time or whatever the process is. However much you want to release, because that's a probably a good way to get to a larger group of people at this point.
Of course, you have to advertise to the public here, but it's a good, I need to advertise when you have your public input.
And that's a probably a good place to advertise this guy.
And also, uh, besides Scottsville Monthly, the change is changing.
That's another good one, yes.
Um, and there's also a Vivana, um, magazine, uh, newspaper, um, can't remember the name, Vivana.
Review. Vivana Review.
So that's another way of including both councils, uh, discussion for us. Um, okay, moving on to slide eighteen, public engagement plan. So this is, uh, just recapping what we discussed. Last meeting and then adding more details. Um, so web page branding promotions, okay? We discussed these things on the left. So, uh, adding more detail on the right, um, you know, thinking about the AC forty-four that, um, Alamo County, uh, comp plan, they, they have this phrase AC forty-four. So, um, one consideration is naming, uh, Scottsville's comp plan will be, uh, SB forty-three. That's twenty twenty-three if we're going to finish this year and then twenty is in the future.
Really?
Um, Scottsville's twenty-year comprehensive plan for twenty twenty, twenty forty-three. Or Scottsville plans twenty forty-three. These are just initial suggestions or consideration. But, um, you know, we always just, uh, retain the, the typical tiles, house, castle comments. It's just a question of whether you want to, to create a little bit of buzz and meaning in the title. Because I think having a date in the title also, uh, puts forward the idea of, you know, how long it's going, looking in the future, right? So I didn't even think about the Alamo County comprehensive plan and timeline. So I saw AC forty-four. I said, what is forty-four? Then I started counting twenty years. So that's just a question or suggestion that if the planning commission wants to really emphasize twenty years, might want to do that and then I would not, then maybe even a lot. Um, okay, moving on to bullet number two, um, Congressman Morrison, I, I did this step and I think we, we talked about the website mainly being up and running by mid-July. So that, you know, it means we might need the measures to the existing website to, uh, push up the survey and any other documents. Okay, um, and then the new website will offer some flexibility for the bank commission to show other information. And, uh, last bullet is we have the comp plan email up and running. So, uh, you can email me there and, uh, you know, anyone from the community in the future can email there and that will be a pretty good point of communication. Okay, uh, keeping moving, uh, to slide number nineteen is talking about a flyer. So at any of these public engagement events, uh, it's always useful to have a flyer on standby to really explain the process in a very simple and succinct way. So on the right-hand side, I've given example of a flyer I created for the Eastern Shore, uh, uh, early this year in January, just explaining, you know, what we're doing there and how does it affect the people. So I, on the, on the left-hand side here for Scottsville, I just suggested some, some potential sections and I, I'd be glad to draft this up, uh, within the next few days and, uh, email it around for your consideration. Because always when you're at a community event, uh, you might not have a moment to talk to every single person, but if they come up to you and you're already talking to somebody, you can just hand them the flyer and say, here, here's information, uh, from a person there.
QR code, something like that?
QR code.
Like we talked about.
So, so, uh, in a few slides, you'll see an example of QR code. Um, okay, it's moving on to slide number twenty, the community survey. Okay, so, um, on the right-hand side, we spoke at the last meeting about, uh, really focusing on a decision tree. Because, uh, commissioners are important to have two types of stakeholders really considered that people that live in Scottsville or frequently visit town or the first time or occasion, this would be another made for tourists. So the commission will have to move forward that I, I have in the, in the subsequent slides and examples and questions we can ask.
Yes.
Um, so we're going to have a paper-based survey and a, an online survey monkey. Uh, we need to start this really probably with a preamble. So let's say someone sees the QR code around town with a little bit about the flyer. We still need to have a preamble talking about, you know, what is this today, what's the information? Okay, um, so what I did see is, uh, the town did have this survey conducted in twenty eighteen. And these questions I thought were actually very useful. This survey was probably mixed use, mixed income study. And I put this in the website first to all the reference. But, uh, to go on to slide twenty-one, you can see the, the information on the right, the question was what would you like to see more of in Scottsville? So this is all different types of houses. So for instance, uh, if the town was looking at providing more residential housing in the comp plan, this would be really informative to govern the mix of the housing. Because, uh, let's say, uh, across the town right now, you know, there's a buy right subdivision of forty-six homes. Those would all be, uh, single family and is that really what people want right now? I, I find this very informative in terms of not only the mix, but also size of the homes. Uh, and also there's some information in there in the survey about a game house, uh, and, uh, both in terms of purchasing, uh, whole price and in terms of rental price that people are looking for. So, uh, we can talk further about whether what the town provides now is really in line with this mix. And would, would the survey that we send out in a, in a week or two, this is a really valid question. I, I think it's a really valid question. About what type of housing people want in the community.
I would love to see the answer to this question. What comes back from the survey?
So this was twenty eighteen, uh, but maybe things have changed since COVID and that was more than five years ago. And that's why I also suggest lining the question that I put out now with, uh, previous questions as much as possible, because then you can also see the trends of the last five or four years. Maybe the types, mix of houses changes as of time be because of, uh, COVID traits and people's lifestyles and changes.
Economy.
And the economy, yes. So, um, that's why I started drafting up a lot of different questions, but I, I gravitated towards really following this, this document that, that those consultants, uh, compared previously. So moving on to slide, uh, twenty-two. This is sort of a monkey. So we pay, uh, thirty-nine dollars. Now I'm serving open for a month or more, um, and we get quite a lot of features. And you can crush the data, so maybe that based on this.
But so we have to have it for a year?
Um, that's a little annually. Yeah, so you can pay monthly, it's just a little bit more than, than the annual.
Cause I don't know, I mean, I don't know what our budget says.
Okay, well, what is it annually? Thirty-nine a month?
Well, it's four sixty-eight annually.
Right, thirty-nine a month or four sixty-eight annually. If we have the budget, we could probably use Survey Monkey for a lot more than just this. So if we can leverage it, it might be worth it.
So maybe I would suggest this would be, uh, one of the bullet points to mention that we're session next week. Uh, and I think, uh, we discussed, we want to make sure the planning commission was in line with whatever's happening. So we wouldn't want to put out a survey in the planning, uh, sorry, the town council and say, hey, what, why are you asking these questions? I think there, there, there are persons to be aligned with and we want to make sure that it was on the same page. Okay, uh, moving on to slide number twenty-three, I'll just keep going, um, for the essence of time that of course, this time.
Hey, um, question before we proceed, are you like really proficient in talking about surveys? Cause we, we really want to talk through this a little bit more before we, town council makes a decision.
Yeah, so, so we have more slides on the survey.
Well, I mean, like as, as far as which package to buy, because you don't want to overwhelm people by sending them a survey every month. So maybe, I don't know, just, are you somebody that's?
My, my.
You have a PhD.
To have a survey over one month. Only to purchase Survey Monkey for one month.
Okay, so it's ninety-nine dollars if you buy one month.
Uh, yeah.
There actually is a, a discount between monthly and annual. So I would like to pin down whether or not it can be monthly. Like, do you, do you know for sure?
Uh, I'll have to, I'll have to actually go into the, uh, to, to the actual.
Like the contract.
Contract, yeah. But what, what is, uh, the bank commission's, uh, preference?
Well, I mean, I have a degree in psychology, so I study statistics a little bit and, and I don't, I know that you don't want to overwhelm people by giving them too many surveys. So I don't know if we would really benefit from an annual package, because it seems like this one here, you, the thirty-nine dollars a month, you'd have to buy a whole year. Maybe you're locked in. So maybe it makes sense just to do one month here and then one month down the road if there's another survey. It's not, we don't need to really get into that. It's just something to think about.
And just to mention, you know, this previous survey, uh, they did not have like any respondents, um. So, um, I believe it was eighty-some people, uh, so, uh, we're not looking at having a huge hundreds of people respond here. So yeah, she, uh, I would suggest having it for one month.
Okay.
Sorry, I put the arrow in the wrong place.
Uh-huh. It was just something to think about. Okay, thank you.
If we're going to leverage it, if we think there are more opportunities to leverage it, it would be worth it. But if we don't, then a monthly, I think, I guess, would be for a day.
Okay, uh, so, uh, if we, uh, share this with, uh, the, uh, town council next week, I will gather their input. Whether they have other uses for the survey and, and they stay, everyone's gonna have a budget anyway.
Right.
So, uh, I'm sure council, uh, mission, council most will, uh, give them the full briefing on that. Okay, um, but moving on to slide number twenty-three. Uh, draft survey questions. Okay, so, uh, previous survey was really based on zip codes. So from the zip code, they generally is, uh, you know, to determine where people are having, uh, want to be, uh, Alamo County, the bottom, can we support? Uh, so that's why the, the start of the survey, I'll suggest we ask for the zip code. And, um, this did not indicate exactly what the precision is, so it's still quite unknown. Uh, the other question is where do you work? So the survey did not ask those zip codes there. They asked for the key reason you work.
Question? Sorry, two, four, five, nine, oh, is huge. Is it worthwhile to do two, four, five, nine, oh, or should we be asking, do you live in town?
Yeah, it, it, it goes back to that original question we talked about last meeting, you know, is it important to differentiate between a person that lives in town or lives, you know?
Okay, okay.
Outside of town. So, okay, what is the really the stakeholder that you're looking at?
No, you're right. You're right. I mean, their, the zip code is the stakeholder too. It's just that.
Some people are lucky and have that.
Right, three counties. Okay, that's fine, stakeholders. I'm with you. Okay.
And some property owners, right, don't have that zip code. Is that going to be clear for them in here?
Uh, that would not be shown, because I, I think it's also a balance between, you know, if we ask for a, uh, identity address, some people might feel singled out or that, uh, their, their personal data should be gathered as well.
Well, I just mean, is this question in yellow? Is this clear? I live in Scottsville or frequently visit the town. We've had discussions and I'm not giving an opinion. I'm just sort of giving information. We've had discussions on this, you know, in town, five hundred people or at the boundary of the fifteen thousand people who sort of live or travel, including property owners, uh, business owners and things like that. Is this all encompassing? Because there has been comment that those groups want to give input. They feel that Scottsville is their community. But when these questions come out, it's mostly about residents or town or whatnot. So I would just offer that, maybe rethink how this is worded if you want to capture that.
I think that's really good comment. Uh, I mean, I believe previously we did talk about breaking this out instead of this A, B, but also A, B, C. So A would be out of the town. B would be, I, I live in the, the region that can go in town.
Mm-hmm.
And then C would be more of the tourists. So that's, that's all about, uh, how the bank commission envisions analyzing this information. And you want to place a lot of emphasis on the town person to ask the most important stakeholder.
Well, is there a way to phrase, that you would recommend phrasing A a little differently to make sure we're encompassing those that are, um, stakeholders?
Yeah, I think this is very specific. I think we should, I mean, and this is just off the top of my head, right? These are for residents and people coming through town, right? I frequently visit. But if you're a, a property owner, you may not visit that well. It may not be really clear. So am I, uh, do I consider myself part of the Scottsville community? You know, I'm not A, B, or C, but I am C, you know, some broader bucket as a third or fourth option that you're capturing anyone who's not in category A, B, but consider themselves. Anyone who's not in category A, B, but consider themselves part of the Scottsville community and want a say. And what happens in Scottsville. If I'm a business owner in Scottsville, but I live in Charlottesville, let's say. Um, I wanna have a voice in what happens in Scottsville, right? And you may not make your decision on that, but you might wanna have that input into your plan. If given the choice between A or B, I think people would know that A would be their choice, but maybe we could. Change this up a little bit to make it, can we get back to you about that? Okay, when do you want that by?
Um, well, it just depends on our time, so what I suggest.
Right.
The bar description, we can find a little more about really what a piece is. I would, I was just trying to get back, maybe by. This Friday, if possible, then we can share updated questions with the town council during the work session on Monday.
Okay. I'm picturing something like using the word community, but let's let's play with that a little bit. Right. Okay, cool. I don't live in town, but I'm part of the Scottsville community or, you know, some verbiage like that, right? I don't know. It depends on how broad you want your input from.
Okay, uh, moving on to slide number twenty four. Maybe we'll take on the decision trees, so anyone that would answer question. The first question, I added in Scottsville, I'm bringing this to the town, however that is maybe. Um, and this is really focusing on the previous questions, uh, one of your top three priorities for Scottsville, so this. The persons would enter in their their text and we create a word cloud. To be a really simple way to analyze, which is what they did for the previous, it was. And the other option would be to have, uh, you know, different choices that a person could submit. Problem is, if you, you know, those are generally not very open ended, that's that's the risk. We'd have to come up with a long list of priorities for them to choose from. But if you think we could do that from the strategic priorities and other things, you know, that that might be the way to go.
What could you do both? Have a list and then say other and have them free form if they wanna put in other.
Yes, I guess I I would have to double check in survey monkey, but I think that that could be another option, yeah.
And I think we could combine what the planning commission feels are priorities and some of the town council. To come up with a list, I would think.
Okay. Um, I'd be glad to be here next Monday, we could. We could feed that together.
I wonder if a list wouldn't, in some sense, kind of pigeonhole people's responses. Because if it's just a text box, then that forces a level of like insight and creativity, like critical thought as opposed to.
That's what I was thinking, though, have both, but yeah, you're. It's up in the air. Again, I'm not saying how it should be, I'm just offering some kind of observation.
So you can see in this document what preferences are needed in Scottsville, so the biggest uh words. Then the next question is, what are your top three wants for Scottsville? Dining park, housing options. And this is really an informal way of analyzing, but you know. Um, I guess we're approaching this hopefully in a very straightforward way. We're not gonna really dive into too many details. Cause A, we don't have a lot of time and and B, uh, we're really looking at feedback to to inform the overall. You know, priorities and how how the plan is actually crafted, we're not gonna be asking really precise questions. So this would be, you know, a word cloud would be something that the commission would discuss and. Double check how this factors into the conference goals, challenges. Are we covering fast food restaurants enough? Uh, are we covering, there's also Mexican here, Mexican food. Um, clothing store, another word, are we considering these things in the contract? But this is really a double check. Taking this stakeholder feedback. So I think having uh options, as in. The person being on select different priorities to choose from, but also having the the open field of. Other, and they can write in their their response and that would be a good little ground. What I can do in the next uh. Three or so days, I can uh re jot for questions and email them around and you can further discuss before Friday, that'd be useful. I can I can use it in a word document.
Just one comment and and Cher, you mentioned that you've studied statistics and. Things like this. Is this going to give you sort of that twenty year future perspective that you're looking for? Right, and then how do you incorporate that in? That's. You know. I I don't know that you're gonna get that, but having studied that, you might have better insight than I do. You kind of get the current vision of what people want, but you know, when you're doing the comp plan and you're looking twenty years down the road.
Well, when somebody tells me that they want a fast food restaurant, I think they want growth. I think they want population growth. I don't think they realize that they're signaling that they want population growth.
That's an assumption, but that is an assumption, right? We found out very acutely.
I mean, it it just, it just goes to show, sometimes you could put the survey out there, but the results that you get are are not. Exactly in line with what people are telling you they want.
So it might be something to think about, that's all. How do you get that future view?
Yeah, and and another reason for a survey is reaching people that don't come to actually events, so reaching out. On a Facebook page or on a change exchange and people that might be maybe staying at home, you know, more. Coming to town, they are still able to participate. And yes, some of the the feedback, uh, and some of the questions might not be geared exactly towards twenty years. But most of the days, you know, we consider our lives for twenty year uh horizons.
If you can extrapolate it down, you know, that's fine, but you have to keep in mind how you would extrapolate.
If some of the results in the survey are things that the commission and council really do want. And have goals to work towards, sometimes it takes ten years to get to a certain goal without a deal for that.
But you would have to mention those almost specifically, I think, to get commentary on those.
So let let me uh. Uh, update your questions, but I may, I'll make a suggestion on how to incorporate the term community. In there. And we can bounce around, so you know us.
Okay. How many questions is too many? Before you lose interest?
I've always heard it's less than, less than ten questions, so that's why I hear we have eight.
When we're asking for the priority, what are we asking? Because how is that different from concerns?
Well, concern is mainly the negative connotation, priorities is more forward looking. Could be here as positive, but we could adjust that that wording. Uh, concerns, uh, for instance, would be lockability. Sidewalks, advancing conversation. Emergency preparedness, so so forth. Um, in terms of priorities. That would be more forward looking, like housing options, dining options. Maintaining the the the. The other concern is at the balance, you know, if you if we grab really detailed questions.
Right.
People won't read the question entirely. So that's why it's about which means.
Right.
No question, whether that or, you know, a detailed question, very, very specific thing, because some people might not even read the whole question. But I had to say from the previous survey, I mean, it's quite targeted. I I would not have expected to see something as specific as Mexican restaurants, but other than that. It's very typical, there's someone wants to cover the Walmart, see by the side of Walmart. But Walmart might not be feasible in the near term, maybe in the long term, they're looking for something.
But I think if you ask that same person if they want Walmart and they want a lot of growth, I'm not sure you'll get. The answer that you expect. You might get yes to one and no to the other, which are mutually exclusive, right? So how do you, how do you make that assessment in the comp plan?
But I mean, in the in the compound context, like let's say the banking mission is balancing. There's something similar to food line, do we need more of that or less of that? So, you know, having words like this kind of informs the conversation.
Well, it's saying people want the retail options, they want stores, they want businesses. Services. Services.
So, for instance.
Convenience.
Forty six buy right homes, uh, in that subdivision. Would that subdivision be well suited to be entirely residential or next of effort? Retirement home come up a lot recently. Uh, maybe that would be an option in in the selection of retirement home, I I would foresee that be a low trend.
I saw an article today, just as general info, on a new type of home that's an expandable home. That it expands and contracts as your lifestyle changes. So you have it one size when you're like a single or a young couple. And then the rooms and the layouts are expanded to fit when you have a family. And then can go back down as you go into the retirement stage and kids move out, so that's awesome. Yeah, that's the way future, right?
Okay, uh, just continue to walk through these questions that we made, uh, slide twenty four. Number five, three types of businesses are needed in Scottsville, that's where we might hear more about restaurants, detail. Work from home, Airbnbs, uh. One state, so it's important. Uh, number six, uh, this is directly from the old survey, uh, what type of housing would you want to see more in Scottsville? I think these are all still relevant types of housing, uh, then we could analyze the issue that we easily have. Just continue moving on. Seven and eight have to do with prices, which I believe, uh, what I think the doggy can tell of the most meaningless basketball. These, uh, I did update slightly because, uh, that survey had a lower price range than I don't think. Those are really feasible anymore, so I decided to think about fifty thousand dollars. Just to keep the survey current, um, and then number eight, this is having to do with rents, which I can, I also increase maybe. So this also will be really informative to feed into the uh, the housing portion of the the comp plan.
So what are, what would we do with this? I mean, I know, I know what. We can't, we only have so much power to make affordability, so this speaks to housing sizes, which speaks to our zoning. So, is that?
Well, this is that there was a. Higher than the one from reading on it again, there were different mixes of apartments that might go into a higher plan.
Well.
This could at least be some data points to inform the conversation.
Okay.
Rather than not having any data points and just talking about.
So where were these people when we had the public hearing?
Well, the document was on the public side. But I I don't remember this being referenced.
Okay.
I didn't listen in every conversation first, but I found it this high chart, right, and sure, who's I feel really informed this this one. Uh, that maybe the housing that was proposed there might not match what the survey. That had said twenty two.
Remember that, remember we were talking about that, like, scale where you've got. Growth and you've got infrastructure and it's a sliding scale and maybe the pictures will change. Can we do that on the survey? Is that too sophisticated in a week's time?
I think I think that's.
I have a lot of faith in you.
But we we can do something, uh, we can talk about that in one of our three person public engagement events. Uh, talking about this balance, you know.
Well, that sliding scale is very important, I think, and in informing the strategic plan. There are people on both sides of that equation who still wanna talk high density. And some people who want it to stay exactly the way it is. Some people want services, but they don't want growth, right? So that sliding scale, I think, in some way, shape or form, even if it's not a graphic. To say, you know, to correlate growth with additional services and bigger. Retail stores and things like that is really, really important, I think, to make that correlation somehow. I think it's a great, it's a great point. Yeah, because otherwise.
Town, do you have more density with that relate to more income for the town or would be more of a burden? Having more roads, so so, yeah, it's always that balance to be considered.
Yeah, cause I'm just thinking, when we get the the data. We have to take the next steps, which is. Trying to make sense of the competing, cause we're gonna have competing interests, so that's the hard part.
Yes, but I think it's uh. The foundational aspect of this, we need to hear what people have to say first.
Yeah. Figure out what's realistic and what, okay.
Cause you know, people could, you know, they can write all kinds of different types of restaurants that they wish. But are we gonna get all these types of restaurants? No, we had no control over.
What restaurant opens, right?
Uh, okay, just have to kind of read through the forest.
Right.
That maybe uh fast food means that people want more affordable food.
Right.
Uh, they want drive through or something else.
Right.
Growth.
Okay.
So, yeah, this is intended to be a simple survey within our means, but I think we could still learn a lot.
Um, you know, I I think about who is spending money in town and our tax base. So is it worthwhile to ask questions about how much money people are spending in town? Or is that not worthwhile because we already know what people are spending because we have taxes paid?
Yeah, that's, that's kind of an alternative question because you could ask them, oh, how often you come and eat in town? But we aren't even really have that, like, some of that information. And then, you know, the way you ask the question is also complicated, you know, you ask, do you come every day to eat in town? Do you come in weekly, do you come?
Well, you can say like, in a given month, how much money do you spend in town, something like that. But I don't, I don't know if there's any value to it. I'm basically, I wanna know, like. I don't know, I guess I just wanna have a better handle on who these people are and what they're actually contributing to town. I mean, are they just giving us a lot of input or are they actually spending money here in part? Cause we have people who live in town but don't spend money in town. And we get nothing from them, cause we don't have real estate taxes from them. But they want the services and the infrastructure.
So we could add add a uh, a ninth question that that would be asked about. A house household income. And then B, how much money is spent in town? Because that will, the household income just a bad, you know. That would inform, you know, this person that answers that they want single family housing, but they're they're not making the type of income that was supported. You know, a huge single family student. Uh, and also question about how much they have to spend on food in town. Uh and also question about how much they have to spend on food in town. Uh whether it be eating in restaurants or getting the food, uh getting through the food line, that that could be another important differentiation. Because a lot of people, you know, they they might not have the money to go to the restaurants here, but they choose to eat their buy food at food line and cook at home. And are those the types of people that are going to be advocating for uh, you know, fast food, right? And not healthy food, yeah. I mean, this is getting really fine graded.
Yeah, it might be too big of a question, I think.
But I think it's a good point you raise, that you do want to make sure the questions are bringing out the data that you actually find useful. Right? And can leverage in formulating your comprehensive plan. You want to make sure you're targeting the right community and getting the right answers back that can inform you. And I think that may require a bit of nuance there.
Yes, so so uh one example, this is hypothesis, but you know, the current zoning is mainly a village, a single-family residential, right? So is that matching with people in town or people that want to move to town? Or is the zoning really advocating for people that buy a retirement home since Scottsville? I mean, this is just a question. Uh I'm not saying anybody question of this hypothesis, but there's there's only a matter of needs, right? So that's certainly putting people in.
I think it could be interesting to, you know, if you're trying to get at that nuance, to ask people, you know, where they eat, like a specific restaurant, because I feel like there is a, you know, there's a certain type of person who goes to um Amici's or the Tavern or the Bateau. Like, those are, I think, probably very different demographics of people. Um, and that might help us get at, you know, how mu- you know, because I feel like asking people how much they're spending in town is a very subjective question. Because, you know, you can overinflate that or underinflate that. Um but maybe, you know, maybe asking more nuanced questions like that could get some of the answers that we want. But I, you know, I think it, I don't know. If you want the questions by Friday, I was going to say it might be worth having like uh you know, a meeting where we really hash out, like what information are we actually looking for?
Yeah.
How do we want to ask the question to get?
And work backwards.
Yeah. So.
Well, and and we have so many priorities for the comp plan. I mean, we could, we could ask a dozen more questions and still just be scratching the surface. So maybe this is, you know, this is a really good start.
I think that's a really good point. Maybe what might be suitable, we we first dive into our priorities a little more.
Yeah.
Then we can come back out for air and reform an interview question. Maybe we're putting a part of course.
That was essentially my point.
Because if we give them the priorities, then we could ask more detailed questions like, okay, what is it about this priority that's important to you? But then we'd really have to think through and and do we have the time to think through what those priorities are and what the follow-up questions would be?
And is there a nuanced way to get to the priority without stating it?
Right.
And whatnot.
Choosing your priorities, you will be putting something out there that may very well be within reach of what the town can work toward doing.
Right.
So so maybe I suggest we uh pause this a little bit more, we keep it in our back pocket, we continue to think about it, it'll be uh at our next meeting, we we talk about these strategic priorities. And maybe we find out that we're not as interested in hearing from the tourists for some reason, and we're more interested in hearing about uh food, restaurants. Uh for those local stakeholders.
Yeah, I mean, I I think we would care more about, you know, the the people who live here um as far as whether or not they wanted to see growth um versus somebody outside of town. So, you know, we could craft those questions very, you you know, very differently.
Well, the the tourists have their own set of questions on slide twenty.
Right, right, right. But like, maybe, you know, maybe we don't care about, you know, what what people who aren't actually in the 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 town of Scottsville care about growth in our town, so we can um we can craft questions, yeah, like, like I said, that that get to that. So, you know, we can, we can figure out what, like, we can wait opinions, basically. You know, I I feel like somebody's opinion who lives in Scottsville, you know, somebody, their opinion on whether or not they want to see growth in town is weighted more heavily in my mind than somebody who lives even in the periphery. I don't know.
On some issues, I would think that is absolutely true. Not maybe, um.
And then I can suggest that uh that Lincoln is providing different public engagement opportunities. And if you're trying to capture different groups in different specific uh for lack of group depth, for lack of word demographics, you have other options to stakeholders and workshops. Another comprehensive plans, you use those different tools to kind of get a better perspective of whatever they're planning. Your first city, your first county, your first town. A little bit added.
Well, I I would definitely support that idea that, you know, we we won't learn a hundred percent of the survey, we have five different.
Right.
So I think it might be worthwhile to strategize what we're really looking to get out from the survey versus what we're looking at in the people.
So, I mean, looking at the questions that you put together, three, four and five, well, and even six, those would definitely help inform our future engagement sessions. So.
Looking at uh slide number.
Twenty-four.
Yes, so these are all still really loving questions. We can ask them in different ways, different venues.
Okay. All right.
Uh okay, uh so uh the out of towners questions of twenty-six. Someone similar, um and again, question in my mind is, is this survey really need to know about uh tourists? Is that really our our focus? Actually, the question I may be leaving the air in the next couple, you get to. Okay, um number twenty-seven is distributing the survey, um so um as was mentioned, QR codes is a great idea. Uh here's an example from Alona County's AC forty-four, where they have a QR code and the account is closer somewhere around Charlesville. Uh okay, and then we can have both the poster with the QR code and the hard copy questions at our listening events in the future. Is someone that uses QR code and knows, that's okay, we've had our paper document. And we can translate those paper, uh paper documents to the, you know, the digital version. Okay, uh moving on to slide number twenty-eight, public workshop. So uh I sensed that this really got a lot of commissioners energized in our previous meeting. And I uh shared a few slides about examples that I recently carried out on the eastern shore. These are easy for me to talk about because I I went through it and learned some lessons, uh as always. Um, one of the things I learned was having this public workshop at the right uh time and location is really important. For instance, on eastern shore of Virginia, we had a large um uh community advisory committee, and they basically decided that the the best date for a public workshop would be on Monday afternoon, because on eastern shore, because the winter weather, a lot of businesses are closed on Mondays. But what we discovered, um it was mainly a board of supervisors, members, people from the benefit studies in shore. And uh there was a certain demographic, uh very white, generally male showed up. We need to hear a lot from uh demographics that make up this shore. So um we're now reaching out to other, you know, types of venues, types of organizations to really get that impact in that community or workshop. So that's why I would suggest if Scottsville has a workshop, um then they might want to be on a Saturday afternoon, for instance, or a Sunday. Whatever day we think would be most appropriate to get people that generally aren't working to be able to come and watch you. Kids, elderly, working adults.
Well, an alternate strategy to consider is going out to the events where people already are.
Yeah.
Right? Coming to the farmer's market and setting up on a Saturday morning, because you're going to get tons of people coming in. Right? Hey, can you fill out a survey for five minutes or whatnot and and reach them that way actively? Sports, you know, kids sporting events or something like that. That's, I think that's probably best bet.
Yeah, so slide number thirty-three, we have seven different types of events.
Oh, okay.
That are all in line with that. I totally agree, um. So in this, this discussion goes back to the like the different types of mix of engagement we we might. Because I think it has a lot to do with the granularity, you know, surveys for a type of people, person that might not get out of the house very often. But they are online or they they want to come on a daily survey. Uh the the public engagement science fair example is it's more about, you know, creating buzz, excitement and awareness about this and getting feedback and impacted in it. And these outreach events on uh slide number thirty-three, these are really going to the people, to the stakeholders. So uh on slide number twenty-nine, just some examples, pictures I took at our Eastern Shore workshop, so um few other uh insights, the flow of the agenda for an event like this is very important. We had about eighty people. Um you had to kind of bring everyone together at the beginning, that's the image of the lab. Give a little introduction, then we had breakout stations, and then uh common wrap-up is really important. We did not have a common wrap-up and we got a lot of feedback on. Um because people standing around, is it over? Then we skip around longer, so common wrap-up is recommended. Uh on twenty-nine, on the left side, a city and resting area is important, just people want to chat. This is also a social event. That's what you make it. This is that Eastern Shore community college. Slide number thirty, um these are the actual science fair stations. We had eight of them. Uh I'm not suggesting we need eight in Scottsville. Probably have lesser lesser numbers. But we had a decent events, you know, as um number one, you can see this timeline, the history of Eastern Shore from the sixteen hundreds until today, people put sticky notes around it, that they were really excited about this. And this and uh uh example of this can can inform uh long-term engagement from the past to the future. Uh and you can also partner with uh maybe the historical society, if they want to put together something as as kind of a collaborative event. That maybe the contract to learn from. Uh on the right-hand side, this was a station having to do with water, um so these were UBA professors uh asking questions about flooding. So they gained a lot of insights. They thought coastal flooding was the main concern, but actually it's inland flooding is is the major concern on Eastern Shore. But it was totally not our area. So that was a great outcome of that. Um and that's just an example of something we can learn from. Uh slide thirty-one is um really talking about how we name these eight stations, and they're all named as questions. Not really telling people the declarative statement, this is what you need or what you should think about, but this is just really asking questions. Being really open-minded. So um at the bottom of slide thirty-one, I would suggest, you know, if if you do want to move ahead with a a full-fledged workshop, you might want to consider what would our five or six stations be be phrased as? Uh number one, could you run us your history of Scottsville? Uh so it's not the history of Scottsville, it's, you know, personal histories. So during this history discussion, we could have a very simple timeline. And people could put in, you know, their memory of floods, you know, previously before the dam was created. And maybe we can have a section that's more forward-looking, you know, what is, what are your thoughts on the history of Scottsville looking to the future? And people could, their concerns like, they they write about flooding in the past, and they worry about flooding in the future. There could be three prompts, for instance. We we have prompts on agriculture and food, economy, transportation, and uh flooding and water evidence. Those are good examples. This is just uh, you know, generating dialogue in this process. Another question, number two, could be how do you value parks and trails? We know that's a really uh exciting topic for a lot of people in town. Um and then from that, there could be another question, where is it difficult to watch? So people can map, mark on a map. Hey, I I need, I need to walk from uh downtown here up to there. Uh so that I think the planning commissioner could learn a lot and that that could inform our uh conversation with people, for instance. Where are your communities? That's another mapping exercise. Where are the primary trade-offs? And what are your fireplaces? That's a, you know, similar to what we were asking earlier. Ranking. So those are all examples. It could be a science fair type of events. And I I can mention lastly, this does take a lot of legwork to put together and coordination. And if we had five different stations, maybe around the room, each planning commissioner and staff members of the town and few uh town councils would be maybe at each station, having that those simple dialogues, gathering information. And I'd also have to say the most important information you gain in an event like this is not always what people pin on the wall or on the board. It's also the conversations you have. So you almost need to be on teams, a few-person teams. One person's talking, that person's taking down, you know, key points. Because after this, you've been on Eastern Shore, there's just so much information you've mined out for three or four hours. Like, oh, this person had a really good idea, and you didn't think about that. We need to write it down quickly. So that, I mean, it's going to be an exciting event, but it's a lot more like I mentioned previous. But it could inform, you know, a lot of uh important decisions by the planning commission. And people of the community can spend the energy and also kind of relax and start getting out and but also seeing the uh the some trade-offs like we were talking earlier. When someone plays a game about density, they kind of understand that, wow, we can't only have single-family residential if we want to achieve some things like having a retirement home, so support that. So those types of discussions can't be communicated through a survey, right? It really had to be in person and talking about those trade-offs, I think. So those are, those are just some suggestions, um. Maybe I suggest we keep keep moving, uh and you can always come back. Um so slide number thirty-two, we talked about these outreach is capable of the same sessions. Uh and as I recommended, call to range of events and then, you know, strategize about who we want to attend these events, who are the stakeholder groups, and how do we represent uh the town, you know, I think it should give me so planning commission members, town councillors, acting events, speaking, so it's not town staff being asked questions. So slide number thirty-three, uh it's really the matrix uh that uh councillor Morse was was talking about. I think that's a great suggestion. So we have this mix of events, um. So so basically, um the uh library first event is on the thirteenth, a possibility. I didn't get a chance to talk again today, she was on on leave last week. But um this is a toll festival, farmers' market, songs of work. Boys and girls fell with an excellent suggestion of our last meeting, the Yancy Community Center, so support. So potentially, the the town staff might not have enough time and resources to be doing every single one of these events. So we might have to kind of branch out, and they might not be hundred percent formal listening sessions. It might just be uh planning commissioner member goes through a baseball or soccer games and starts talking to a few parents and jotting down some notes. And we we kind of bring it back and that's sort of the condition. This, uh doing every single one of these seven or multiple ones in a organized fashion, it'd be a lot of, a lot of work, of course. Okay, so so here's um slide number thirty-four, it's uh this one to the left, I like to be found out if they had to uh launch the event for their summer activities. So this is uh one thing that I could talk again about um that one or two of us could attend, and this could be our first event. And even though it uh it might not be a formal move, it could just, you could be there and talking to people and practicing our questions, this could be a little out of my question. Uh slide thirty-five, uh I did talk to Ed, who manages the Yancy Community Center. He by chance uh has married to one of my colleagues at the Equity Center in in Charlesville, so. Um yeah, he and I had a big conversation, but he wants to have another one. Really talking about, you know, what types of questions we'll be asking. Really talking about, you know, what types of questions we'll be asking and. Uh, how this interactivity means, he was not aware that Scottsville is, is gonna be, I didn't discover it's a plan. When he heard probably is a plan for me, um, he thought it was the county council. So I think that's important, another message that we might need to emphasize, and yes, Alamo County is doing a conference, but we're doing ours too with them. And it's a different process, but they're related, it's based. So Ed and I will talk, uh, soon, um. He did mention that a group from the ass is coming here on the twenty fourth, uh, about this collaboration with the circle society and the union. So he thought, he thought that was really fruitful events. Okay, um. So then thirty six, uh, is really talking about these joint work sessions, um, again. So, uh, the first joint work session in our schedules really suggested for June twenty sixth. So the, the sequence would be that, uh. Uh, town council has the work session on the twelfth, on the June twelfth. Then, uh, town council has their formal meeting on June nineteenth. And then the following Monday, you would have a joint work session if, uh, the, um, back commission thinks for ready. Another alternative option that I think I'm also hearing today is maybe it's useful for us to dive into the actual document. And get our feet wet again, and really compare with these. Strategies to, to make sure that we're all on the same page. That could be another strategy, instead of jumping into the work station, work session, uh, launching with people, not having a clear idea of this. Yeah, we need to be ready, and I think, um, we, we just have to have a more clear idea. Um, I think, uh, uh, councillor Morse, you, you're kind of. Including with your process here, you're gonna be writing up the outcomes soon. So maybe what, uh, I could suggest the town, um. Town council and planning commission, maybe we could, we could work a little bit more on documenting ourselves and convince our views. And, uh, have our, our joint workstation a little bit later. That's kind of what I'm sensing.
Yeah, I'd rather have more data before we go into that meeting and we're just not gonna have enough by June twenty sixth.
Yeah. Great, okay. Um, so. Here's, um, slide thirty six on the right hand side, when we do have that meeting, um, maybe sometime in July, um. These are some of the things that we focus on potentially at first joint meeting. Uh, the most important thing, if the planning commission wants to really go ahead with this public workup, uh, we really need to have everyone on board and kind of discuss roles, like. We pretty much agree on five different stations, for instance, and you kind of assign different, uh, commissioners or. Council members to be at station one, whoever wants to talk about hydromobils. Or station two, anyone that wants to talk about, uh, parks and trails, so I think, I think we have, we know some of those people that are really excited about. Parks and trails, so that'd be a really easy one, but we need to kind of do a lot of steps on all of the stations. For example, if that's how the management issue might have to see.
So the other, the other thing we have to consider is we have, if we have everybody there, right, we have to advertise that, we have to. It's a formal meeting at that point, right, so.
So that, that also takes, uh, I think both bodies have to vote on that, to attend.
Both bodies would have to be there. Same avatar.
So, so maybe what I suggest, uh, at the town council work session next week, uh. If you know this is a good idea, councillor Morse, you could. Brief them a little bit on the, the, this engagement plan and then say that in the further future, we're thinking about having a joint session. Um, sometime in July, that, that will give them some notice and that they can start planning in terms of their own schedule.
Yeah.
And is, is having a Monday joint work session, you think I have to look for the, the town council and panel commission Mondays, that's?
It's hard to say, I, I don't think it's a bad idea because we do that, we meet on Mondays normally.
The last, generally the last.
Right.
One of the work sessions of planning commission, you can have it during that meeting, right, meaning. The commission can invite the council to their meeting.
Yeah, we have it on the agenda and then we probably don't have to advertise for it and have a special meeting that way. We just tack it on to the back of an existing meeting, one way or the other.
Yeah. Uh, that sounds like a really, uh, fruitful strategy, uh, so then. We can have a little bit more flexibility in schedule, we don't have to always plan for a joint meeting will be the last Monday of the month. Whenever that's applicable. Okay, um. So, moving on to slide number thirty seven, um, this is focusing on draft and elements. So on the right hand side, uh, this is the link to the one drive once again, and this is the actual work document where, uh. Anyone on the, then initially so, so working can, can go in and start editing the document, this is track changes for any problems. Okay, um, so what I will do gradually, I will start going and highlighting areas that I sense are very. Outdated or old or things that are obvious updates, like a small area plans on a calendar, you gotta ready them. So I'll start to do that, and you'll see those. So that's, that's all on the actual engagement plan and the, uh. The documents, uh, moving on to the last section, section five on slide thirty nine, um. The, uh, upcoming planning commission meetings, um. So, what I'm hearing is work session, the joint work session on June twenty sixth, probably won't happen, uh, maybe we could have. You know, our, our own focused discussion, we gotta ask people to talk about more strategies and goals. If, if, uh, councillor Morse, you think your, your document might be done by June twenty sixth?
Hopefully, yeah, at least, at least some semblance of it.
Someone's, at least the high level, um.
Yeah, well, the high level ones are done through the priorities, it's really just at the O G S M model. And below, that's what's not done, if I can get those high level goals sort of annotated. I think then we're, uh, we're, we'd be, that's probably enough detail. To marry into the comprehensive plan. Cause you don't need all those specific projects, right, I mean, it's good information to have, but it doesn't need to all be spelled out in a comprehensive plan. I'm assuming.
Uh, I mean, for this early, uh, discussion, uh, yeah, we can focus in your higher level materials. And, uh, have that, have that discussion, uh, at our, at our next meeting, whenever that might be. It could be on the twenty sixth of June, I think that might really help, before they have a focus system on, uh, strategic priorities, so. Because if you read it, if, if, first count, comparison, these, this, oh. Uh, I wouldn't say that this alive, it take a lot of filtering. And, and up healing, so, so we had to really talk about, talk about that, I think, we really had to sit down. During a, a work session, I had to do that more of like a table setting. If, if you think the twenty sixth of June would be really good for that. Cause I worry if we, we wait on that discussion in July, you know, there's, uh. The third of July, regular meeting, there's the fourth of July holiday and so, so we start with, with the new scheme, I guess.
Well, I think you can potentially have a joint discussion with representatives, right, without having, you know. The full group, right, just that, you know, volunteers are interested parties so that your work can move forward.
Yeah, I'd be glad to have a conversation with two commissioners, that would be fruitful, we, we wouldn't have to, uh, establish a forum.
So that's to talk about in, integrating the strategic plan and the comprehensive plan.
Yes. So that'd be basically. Looking at. Existing document, which is broken into a lot of different, uh, goals, objectives and strategies. Seeing how the alliance of this, we need to totally rewrite.
But I, I think we also need the third piece of the puzzle, which is the community input. What if there's a goal that comes out from our engagements that we hadn't considered?
Right, so I totally agree with you, it's, it all kind of needs to happen somewhat in parallel. Because if we don't know what we wanna talk about with the community.
Right.
Can't get the right feedback, so that's why maybe having the first discussion amongst ourselves would be really fruitful. Based on, uh, councillor Morse's information.
Okay.
Then after that first discussion where we're kind of all kind of aligned somehow, uh, then we can start the communication. And we're, we're, we're hopefully gonna be asking more targeted questions. Because if we're, if we're, uh, not party with this community engagement, we'll be speaking very general. And like, while we discuss about the survey question.
And you don't need to wait to the twenty sixth to have that meeting, if you're just gonna have a representative, right, you can do that. As soon as you can get everybody at the table.
So perhaps next week I can start having one or two person conversations. Is that what you prefer rather than having all meeting?
That's fine, it moves things faster.
It's a lot to get done and, I mean, it seems like, how many months is it, eight months or something, but it's. It's a lot of information to pack into eight months.
It is a lot of information and it's a lot of sequencing.
Yeah.
Because, uh, if you factor in the, the, the number of meeting slots that we have available.
Right.
In theory. And then how we need to coordinate with the town council. There's a certain flow of information while keeping everyone on the same page, it's, it's a challenge.
Well, and that's what your Gantt chart doesn't show, right, there are dependencies. On these activities which will push the timeline out if those dates push out, right?
Right, yeah. So the dependencies are always, you know, even more detailed than the Gantt chart right now, so. That's, uh, that's a really important consideration. So, uh, what I'm hearing is I'll proceed to have one or two person conversations regarding the goals and strategies. And, and create some sort of, uh, consensus documents. In preparation for our third of July meeting next, next month.
Okay.
Um, so. In parallel, uh, we also talked about the community engagement events, um, so we, we just talked about writing the document or working on the document. Now about these community engagement events. Uh, do we wanna still have any of these smaller community engagement events, uh, in parallel, or do we wanna? Hold off on those until July?
Well, I think getting the survey out. As a first step, and that could run continuously. But we can start generating data from that, that'll help inform our next sessions, but. I think we're. It's gonna be really hard to get engagement sessions in person in June, I mean, it's doable, we don't need but two weeks. I think it's just how focused will we be?
Right, yeah. So, uh, further to that, what I can do is, um, you know, through these conversations. I can also, uh, start tracking surveys, but, and I'll put this in a, in a live document on the one giant. So you can, you can log in and see how the survey questions are, are, are progressing. Then after I have any visual discussion, so, for instance, Mr. Dawson, I, I talk to you next week. Then I'll update the rest on, you know, in email, and here's what we accomplished. We re-practiced survey questions here and there, they look at the document, they're just, you know, something like that. So we can all keep moving in that, you know, uh, process without having a formal meeting. Super.
I also think before the public engagement sessions, we really need to, like, sit down and get on the same page with. What information we're trying to find out.
Right, so that, that's, uh, together with the strategic plans, objectives, uh, goals, uh. I think once, uh. The banking is a little bit clear on, on how we align with those.
Yeah.
That will reveal more nuanced questions, and we might not focus on some things that we thought we would focus on in other words.
Okay.
Great, okay, well, thank you so much for this, uh, very, really valuable, uh, feedback and guidance, and you, I will keep. Punching on us, it's a long journey still.
Um, was this made public? Right, it shouldn't be, cause there's.
No, it's not.
Okay, cause there's. The URL in here that the public should not have access to, cause. Email, okay, cool, okay. Okay. Oh, right, 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 you said that, okay, all right. Okay. Okay, thank you, thank you.
And if anyone, it does seem like a complicated process, we have a lot to punch in here, but I think we made, uh, good progress today.
Awesome, thank you. Um, while we're sitting here, I realized that we, um, I had a, an aside conversation with. Commissioner Strazner who said that she would like to stay on. And that's why she's here today, um, so I think we need to make that announcement public, did you? Are you still staying with us, cause you're here tonight?
I am, yeah.
Yay, okay. Okay, so she, she's, um, rescinding her resignation.
Yes.
Oh, no, no, sorry, yes, there's still one other appointment, uh, out, uh, Angela's, uh, on the term. So we would have to, I've already informed town council that too.
Okay.
Then I guess I can follow up with her more recently.
Okay, thank you to, to see what her intent is, okay.
How does that work, cause before, you know, I, I was filling, um. A vacant position and then when it rolled around to be renewed. Um, planning commission basically just asked if I wanted to keep the position and, and I said yes, and we moved forward. Is, is that how it goes, or is there more rigor than that normally?
They will officially appoint you, but that's generally the way it goes, you wanna continue.
Okay, okay, that's what I thought, but, you know.
I mean, I, I think it probably should be a little more. Of a conversation, like, how, you know. How did you enjoy your participation in this last term, um, do you wanna continue to participate, um?
Right.
You know, what obstacles might you see to fulfilling the re- remainder of your term if you're reappointed, um? But I guess it's hard to get volunteers, so we just kinda take, um. You know, it's not like people are banging down the door to take your spot.
Right.
Um, I'd like to see an application process where we learn a little bit more about a person and their skills and whether they. Have, you know, have a, an interest in planning, um, because there's always multiple ways to serve the community, you don't. You know, there's, if you're not planning minded, then maybe this isn't the best way, maybe there's A R B, maybe there's government services, there's different ways that. One can participate in the town, so it would be nice to be a little bit more. Um, having a, a, an intentional dialogue about it, but. But right now, it's just, uh, you want to serve? Excellent. We'll be bored. You want to continue serving for another term? Excellent.
Gotcha.
Well, thank you. We appreciate your service. Yeah, years, right? Three years?
Oh, I, I think it's.
It was, or you, you and me started in twenty twenty, right?
Twenty twenty?
Right, right around the pandemic time.
Yeah. Yeah, it's been a while.
But our next meeting, we should have. Is it the next meeting or the August meeting is our annual meeting where we can vote for chair, vice chair?
At the bottom, you could just announce that chair. I think we, I want to make sure that we get appointments through.
Okay, yes, double check with.
I think it's something I can follow up with you right after uh appointments are wrapped up.
Okay, we'll just put it on the agenda.
Yeah, I think if they do it like, so then uh June or the fifth of July, but if it takes July.
Okay. All right, very good. Thank you.
It's on the way.
It's on what?
The radar.
Okay, excellent, thank you. Okay. Anything else?
Um maybe attend tomorrow. I I think some of the workshops, um some activities they do there. Give you a little bit of perspective, but isn't exactly what we can talk about, but there's a lot of different ways to uh. To to approach it, I think, but it might be interesting in that kind of type of way. Um they use, you know, other than that way, that means driving, so. Maybe a suggestion to get the creativity flowing. You could see them there. I'll be there tomorrow night. Um it'd be, yeah, really difficult to see how they do it and how Scottsdale is backing into the equation better.
Okay, I'll try to. Should be able to. Okay.
I'd like to make a motion. For an adjournment.
I second.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So. July third is our next meeting. A weird day.
At least before the celebration, not the day.
Thanks for sitting in, thanks for participating. Bye, good night. Thanks so much for your participation.
Thank you all.
Hey, Lisa. Hey. So. July third is the work session?
It is our next meeting.
Okay.
But we are, um Lincoln, how do you want to get a small group? Um our, our meeting is adjourned, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would just follow up so I can stop the recording.
Okay, sorry, meeting adjourned.
Oh, yeah.